City of Brainerd's Planning Commission Meeting Wednesday, March 16th, 2002. And we'll go to a roll call. Director Chansky, please.
Absolutely. Erickson.
Here.
Excuse me. Goram.
Here.
Calrus. Woodward.
Here.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Andy Wall.
Present. All right. And now, please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, run under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Item number four on the agenda, approval or amendments of the agenda. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve, Jaeger.
Second, Goram.
And second, I hear, Erickson. I'll give you another one later, I swear. So, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? All right. That passes. Now, we're looking at approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on February 16th, 2022, and the workshop held February 23rd, 2022. Looking for a motion, please.
Motion approved. Yep, sorry. Jaeger?
Second, Goram.
Nice job. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Like a cat.
Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign? All right. That motion carries. And, we are now at old business. So, we are now at a public hearing and recommendation for the proposed zoning code and zoning map. So, I welcome Jennifer Hafcamp this evening and David Chansky. David, could you introduce this topic for us, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. I would love to. So, after some 15 months of dedicated work, I think we're at an exciting moment here in Brainerd in which we are going to be holding the public hearing to consider this proposed zoning code that you have in your packet and also have in a printed form this evening as well here. I'm not going to try to steal any thunder from Jennifer. All I can say is I think what you're going to be presented, what you are presented tonight and what you're being asked to take some action on in the form of a recommendation to the City Council tonight, I think is a great product, is a vast improvement on the code that we have now. I will let Jennifer talk about how it's a vast improvement. I'll just show you physically and visually. This is our current zoning code or a recent version of it. This is what we are proposing that you recommend adoption to the City Council tonight. I believe this code, it is simpler. It is more friendly to development and easier to understand and implement. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I'd encourage you handing it over to Jennifer and she'll give the kind of more detailed walkthrough of this new code.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So, I'm really excited to be here. This is always the fun part because we actually have a full deliverable and that's always exciting, right? And so, a lot of what you'll see tonight is a little bit of a repeat from what we went through and walked through at the work session that was a few weeks ago. Part of that, obviously, is because we had the full code a couple of weeks ago and you guys gave us some input. We did go back, make some of those edits, and now we have the full draft. But, obviously, we have members of the public here this evening, so we want to make sure that they understand what's in here before we go ahead and open up the public hearing. So, to give you a little bit of a sense of where we're headed in the presentation, the first step, obviously, we're just going to talk a little bit about the schedule because we've put the schedule up every single time we've met with you. And finally, we're at the end of it, so we have to show it again. And then, basically, I've laid this out as just an outline of the zoning code that's before you this evening with the key topic areas and then also just a summary of what the main points of change or areas of change within those sections are. And then, we'll wrap up and I'm happy to answer any questions. So, with that, as I said, I already sort of like let the cat out of the bag, but cool, we're at the end, right? Which means you're actually going to have an ordinance and a document that when you all are trying to make decisions in reviewing your land use applications, you actually have something that you can review it against. And it has clear guidance and direction in terms of how you're supposed to process things like conditional use permits, variances, all of those things that you dig into the weeds here as the planning commission, you're actually going to have a document, hopefully, that's a lot easier for you to use as you move through those review processes. So, we are almost there, obviously, because once we get through this evening, we have to still go in front of the City Council. Hopefully, they also are doing cartwheels. I'm sure they will be. And we will have a document that is fully approved, hopefully, within about 30 days, a little bit less. So, for those of you that are with us, either online or in the audience, the outline of the zoning code is different than where your current code is. So, when David held up that binder, you all may remember that it's a little bit cumbersome and it's a little bit difficult to navigate through. And also, there are pieces of information that are repeated multiple times throughout that document, right? Our goal through doing this process was really to synthesize that document, put things in there once where at all possible. Sometimes, there's some repetition because that's just part of the nature of the beast, but to the extent possible, let's put it in there once. Make sure that it's clear the one time that it is in there and let's make the document shorter. So, what we did is we restructured the document, which I know you're all aware of. We've got our major sections, which are title, zoning districts, allowed uses, general building, development, and design standards. Rules and administration are now at the back. Those used to be at the front. And rules and definitions, also, at the back. So, as I said, I'm just going to walk through each of those sections to give everybody a sense of what's in the document, what's changed. A lot of the information that's in your current code actually did make its way forward into the current draft. It's really in real organization. A lot of the sections or the uses in particular, some of your glossary items, et cetera. We didn't recreate the wheel here. The idea was really to focus on a couple of key sections where we did make major changes. So, the first one is obviously the zoning districts. The zoning districts were really a full rewrite. And when I say that, it's not because we're saying everything in the city should be redone or redeveloped. In fact, that's not the case at all. A lot of what we heard throughout this process was the fact that your current code didn't match your actual desires for development. So, early in this process, I'm sure you remember, we went through this nonconforming analysis and looked at, okay, if you applied your code today to some of the areas that you love, could you actually recreate? And the answer was no. And so, what we did was really take a look at each of those zoning districts and try to figure out, how do we adjust the regulations to bring most properties into conformity? Especially in those areas that we said, we really love this area, we want to be able to reproduce this. Or if someone comes in and wants to pull down a house, can they redo it? And how do we do that? And how do we make sure that those zoning districts actually match physically what we want to see on the land? So, with that as our charge, we restructured those zoning districts. We also made sure that the zoning districts match your future land use plan and your comprehensive plan. Obviously, you just adopted that as your policy direction. So, we need to make sure that all of those pieces are talking together moving forward. So, I think we reduced the number of zoning districts by, I want to say, a half a dozen, about. So, that's a pretty significant synthesis, but I think we actually are much closer to creating what you want to create through those zoning districts as opposed to having some of these little, you know, one-offs that didn't do a whole lot for you except for create confusion in terms of when something came in. So, by reducing that, synthesizing, getting the regulations that we want to within that document, we were also able to reduce the nonconformity within each of the zoning districts substantially. So, when we started this, I think I had a spreadsheet up and that in our residential districts, if we considered all of them, it was at least 60% of all of the lots were nonconforming. We fixed that, right? So, we looked at also some of your commercial districts. We looked at every single district you had, adjusted the regulations with the target and we, I'm not saying achieved it 100%, but we got close to getting at least 90% of your properties into conformance. So, in most districts at this point, if you look at the regulations in terms of setbacks, front yard, side yard, coverage, lot sizes, those types of lot frontage or width, we brought almost all of the properties into conformance with what the code is. Hopefully, that will make life a lot easier as you move forward because you're not going to have all of these issues with, does this conform? Does it not? Is it a variance? And hopefully, our side effect is we reduce the number of variances that are requested and that people can come in and truly create what they want to within the confines of the character of an area. The other thing that we did is increase the number of tables, or as I say, tabular form, to hopefully make it a lot easier for residents, business owners, developers to understand what they're actually allowed to do. So, instead of having a whole bunch of words that you have to fish through lists, everything's on a nice little table, the other piece of that is creating a diagram that corresponded to the table so that if the words still don't make a whole lot of sense, which in some cases they might seem confusing, the diagram will clear it up and make it clear that what is front yard setback? Where are those dimensions? What's the rear yard, et cetera? The other piece, which there's a typo, I'm French, I think, estelleish, is to create form standards for certain districts. So, we didn't go so far as to create form standards, for example, for your industrial districts. Your industrial district was very, very straightforward, clean, accomplished what you needed it to, right? So, in terms of form, it was already achieving what you wanted. But there were some districts where those form standards were more important, like the Main Street, like Town Center, and we're going to talk about those in just a moment. So, Main Street, this is an example, just to give folks a sense who are watching. On the left-hand side, we've got an example of the diagram that's currently in the draft code. On the right side is the table. You should be able to hand this to a developer or a property owner and say, here are the standards, and they should be able to get a very good idea about what they can put on the property physically. If we can achieve that in one page, we're in good shape. Maybe an 11 by 17 to make sure it's big enough so you can read it, but one page, they can get a really good sense of what they can do. So, Main Street, we focused on that idea of form, so some of those regulations and standards did change on this table. And then, the Town Center, which is what we called Main Street, the donut hole, right? And Town Center is sort of the donut that goes around that donut hole. Once again, we had the objective of making sure that we have a diagram that's easy to understand and a table that corresponds with those designation or what we're looking for in terms of density, in terms of setbacks. And then, it references, just for everybody, it references the uses, which is the separate section now that hopefully makes life easier to understand. We've got the physical form and the dimensions that are in our zoning districts, and we've got the uses in a separate section. One of the other pieces that got added in was this idea that we needed to have a frontage overlay that bordered between the donut hole of Main Street and the donut of Town Center. So, on these two blocks, these two sections, anything on the main floor needs to have a commercial or retail component. Residential can be upstairs. In the Town Center, if you recall, we reduced or eliminated that restriction. That restriction is really limited to Main Street. So, this idea here is making sure that if you're buying, you know, if you're binding or if you have some kind of bounding box around Main Street, if you will, that those edges also retain that same character. In the ordinance, we have these frontage types that are permitted. This is where we're getting into that form in each of these districts. So, in frontage types, we have shop front, common entry, and stoop. Those three uses are actually permitted anywhere in the Town Center. If you're in this purple edging, it's shop front or common entry that's permitted. If you're behind it, then all three are permitted. If you're in the Main Street District, which is in your code, the only two that are permitted are shop front and common entry because those would make sure that we've got commercial, retail uses on main floor and residential uses up above. One of the other pieces that I think is new, that I won't spend a whole lot of time on, but I just want to make sure that folks are aware of, is the TN3, which I know we talked about quite a bit, the traditional neighborhood 3. The concept here is that actually, it's not zoned anywhere in the city at the moment. It would be that somebody who comes in with 20 acres or more would be interested in doing a new neighborhood or a new development. And as part of that, they would have the option of rezoning to TN3. What the TN3 does is it allows flexibility within the district. It provides for a range of densities and unit types, and it also allows for some commercial and retail uses as well. So, the idea that you have sort of a denser core or edge that then, you know, I was going to say radiate, but that just sounds a little over the top, but we're going to go radiate, out into a less dense type of product. So, you might even have estate lots on the edges versus apartments towards the core. It's a cool new tool that you don't have currently in your ordinance and hopefully, someone will use it. I'm getting a little bit of, okay, we're hoping someone uses it. It's like a PUD, but adds more direction, right? A PUD doesn't give a lot of direction to folks. This gives direction if someone wants to use it and says, this is about what we're looking for. This is how it could be structured. So, the next section of the code is the allowed uses section. There's a new table of uses, which I happen to love, a table of uses, because it makes life a lot easier for your staff, for you as planning commissioners, the City Council, because if somebody comes in and says, I want to do X, you go to your table, you look at the use type and you say, okay, what are you zoned and are you allowed to do it? If you are, what's the permitting process for it? So, instead of having it buried in pages and pages of text, it's in a table, right? The other thing about it is you can copy the table and give it to anybody, which is also great. And the average person will be able to understand what they're allowed to do based on the table of uses. The other thing that we changed within this section is that more things became administrative permits. So, this is that idea of, let's reduce some regulatory red tape. Let's try to make it easier for developers and builders to move through the process. And oftentimes, if you have to get a conditional use permit, it just immediately adds 60 to 120 days because it has to go through that public hearing process with the planning commission, the City Council, et cetera. So, if we can handle more things using an administrative permit, life becomes easier for a developer or a business owner or a landowner. So, we tried to change and get as many things into that administrative permit process as we possibly could. What we didn't do, though, is change a whole lot of things with respect to whether it was permitted, whether conditionally or interim, et cetera, and not permitted. If things were not permitted, they generally stayed not permitted. If things were permitted in some way, they generally stayed permitted in some way. So, just from a policy perspective, those items that were viewed as, this shouldn't be in this district, the majority of them did not make their way into the new districts. The other thing, and this came out at the work session, is there's a lot more use-based standards in your current draft because I didn't know that they were there. So, in this code, it's in there. And there's a lot of them, which is good news because I was a little bit confused about outdoor seating, for example, with restaurants. And it turns out, you have a great section, which we synthesized and consolidated, but they are now all in there. Staff has gone through them. So, while the pages are still not as many, they did grow by just a little bit since your work session. And then, because I couldn't help myself, here's an excerpt of the table of uses. Because if someone's at home and they're like, that sounds like a really great table, I just need to know what it looks like. Here you go. But again, the idea is, it's very easy to use and we're hoping that everything in here becomes easier for folks to use and understand. All right. So, section four is the general building, development, and design standards. This is where some of the changes occurred with respect to crossing over into the form-based elements. There are some new things about the minimum width of a principal structure when it's attached to the accessory building. We talked about that at the last meeting. We revised some of the language for nonconforming exteriors and what triggers compliance, especially in your Town Center and Main Street areas. There are some significant updates to the landscape requirements. You guys have the benefit of having James here who knows his landscaping better than I do by quite a bit. And so, that portion of the code got a lot better. We updated the off-street parking requirements very minimally. We know that there is a parking commission that has been active, so that's probably a task for, you know, code update, part two. But, there are some minor changes that happened in there to make sure that they're consistent with the rest of the regulations. And then, also, there are new fence diagrams that hopefully help explain the fence standards with respect to heights, and those are both in your document as well. So, a lot of this was really revision as opposed to rewriting. It was more about making sure that it's consistent with the new form standards of specific districts and also, once again, trying to make it easier, especially in like Town Center and Main Street, for example, number two, making sure that folks are allowed to do internal remodeling and they're not tripping these huge exterior improvements necessarily because we really want folks to be able to reinvest in our Town Center and in Main Street, on Main Street. So, here's an example of some of the things that kind of made their way into it. This was at the open house that we held a couple of weeks ago. This idea of trying to create a street presence, meaning that you know where the entry is, a sense of entry. We understand garages are going to be here because that's just, well, it's Minnesota. It's not even just Brainerd. It's Minnesota. It's cold here, even though it's great today. Folks want garages and they want them to be attached in a lot of cases. So, how do we do that? And then, also, make the street environment more interesting from an architectural perspective? So, how do we make sure that folks know where the front entry is? And part of that is recessing the garage behind even minimally, just to break that plane. So, those are the types of standards that are in there. You can see that we've put a dimension, for example, for the driveway at the right-of-way connection so that you don't have just one long strip of concrete that goes from the garage all the way down, that it needs to taper down, and we're going to increase some of that green space as a result. So, it's little tweaks like that that hopefully will make a big impact long-term, but won't be so cost prohibitive that folks won't want to do them. So, it's making sure that we're still being responsive to the development community as well. So, the last section before the glossary is our rules and administration section. Most of this was really just cleanup and synthesis, but there were some pretty significant changes to the PUD section, so I wanted to make sure to highlight that. The way that the code is now revised is that a PUD requires rezoning. So, you may have noticed in your draft code this evening that, for example, the old mixed-use designation for the MPC is now mixed-use MPC, and there's actually a district that's been written for it. So, moving forward, if somebody comes to you and says, I want to do this, but I would like to do it using a PUD, you rezone it and part of that rezoning is that the design and the standards and the areas of flexibility from your standards that you've granted get documented and get summarized into your code, number one, and that that change happens on the map. And so, the whole goal of this, obviously, is so that in the future, somebody knows that's something special. It has a base underlying zoning. So, for example, in MPC, our base underlying zoning is the Town Center. So, anything in Town Center, they're allowed to do. The overlay says, and here's the areas of flexibility that we're granting you. And you document it right in the code in summary. And then, you reference the PUD plans as on file with the city. So, the whole idea is to, A, once again, document it so that 50 years, I was just talking to someone and they're like, you know, 50 years from now when you're dead, which is true. 50 years from now, somebody can look at it and go, I know what they did and I understand it, right? And none of us have to be here to try to explain it, and that's our objective. There's been some questions about what happens to Flood Plain, the Shoreland, and the subdivision ordinance. Those all remain separate ordinances and will continue to be part of the city's code. They are not incorporated into this zoning section, but they do make some references. There are some cross-references because, obviously, Flood Plain, Shoreland operate as overlay districts. And whereas a PUD might grant flexibility, Flood Plain and Shoreland tend to be more restrictive. Those more restrictive requirements will still govern. So, you've got your base zoning district. This time, we've got an overlaid district on top of it that's more restrictive. In that case, you have to follow the more restrictive regulations. And then, because I wanted to make sure everyone knew we were really at the end, I put the whole outline on this slide. The last part of our code is actually the rules and definitions. Again, I'm kind of excited about this section because we have gone in and organized it so that hopefully you can actually find stuff in it, number one. And number two, we broke it out so that there's rules of how to use the code, which was in your current code, but in the definitions section, it's broken out so that it's things like persons, regulatory bodies, et cetera. Those are all in one section. We've got development types of standards all in one section and uses so that hopefully life is easier to navigate through. There were actually quite a few edits in that section and there were a lot of definitions that I didn't know, so thank you. I now know more. So, from that, that is, I think, the, and I'm being serious, and that is the full code. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I think that's a pretty comprehensive overview for anyone who's tuned in to watch us this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hafcamp. And up until now, I kind of had ambitions of being around 50 years from now. If there's something you need to tell me about my ambitions, I'd appreciate it.
That's wonderful. So, then you can clarify when someone asks.
The resources to why it was done that way.
Right. Exactly.
Thank you. One comment regarding TN3. TN3 provides direction, but it is not prescriptive. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah. So, there's some, when you're in the code, in TN3, there are some standards that are established in there, but it does offer ranges within there. It also offers a wide range of densities available, use types. It does have some street sections for options in there, alley. So, there's lots of flexibility within it. It's kind of like having, in some ways, it's like having a bunch of Legos, right? Of, here are some of the building blocks and ideas about it, and every developer would put them together differently, right? But it's giving them the actual tool to be able to build something.
Excellent.
Mr. Chair, if I may too. And, you know, also with the TN3 and kind of looking at how it would work, you know, again, nothing is zoned TN3 right now on purpose. And part of that is to allow a developer to come in, say, I would like to do, TN3 intrigues me. Here what I would like, here's what I would like to do. And if the city were to say, yep, we agree with that, we'd love to see that kind of development, as part of that rezoning, there would be a, I'm blinking the term you used for Jennifer, essentially a management document that says, it's not necessarily like a PUD, a development agreement, but a management document that says, okay, this is how, we're going to rezone this and this is how you're going to develop it.
So, it's a regulating plan for those who are looking in the code. That's what it's described as. It's very similar, though, to a PUD agreement or a development agreement, but it actually is a little bit more about the physical construct, if you will, of the plan that's approved in it.
So, for our developers that are looking at that, understanding that, that's, again, the key word is guidance and it's not saying it must be done by the diagram.
Correct. No, the diagram is simply to illustrate a concept of how these pieces can work together. It is also, the diagram that's in there is to scale. So, it's not scalable in terms of you can't print it and drop a scale on it, but it's to scale in terms of that's actually what fits on 20 acres. And the lots that are in there are actually based on the lot sizes. And that, so like, it really provides good, you know, if somebody were to look at it, this is what can fit in 20 acres.
Tangible. Thank you. Questions for staff or for Ms. Hafcamp? Mr. Jaeger?
One, just real quick. If you recall, we had an adjacent conversation last time.
We did. Glossary.
So, I'm reading it in the glossary and it says, a shared or adjoining border or property. Okay, Mr. Chansky, sorry.
No, can I? Hold on.
You look at how excited they were.
I am.
This is a hot topic, see?
Because I took your adjacent, abutting conversation to heart when I went back. And so, there's actually a budding in there too now.
Got it.
And so, a budding and adjacent now have different terms, different definitions. And then, I went and did a whole, like, of every adjacent and every abutting to make sure that it matches with what the intent of the statement is.
Specifically screening, correct?
Correct.
That was my only question. Thank you so much.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, and on top of that, there were some areas where we were probably like redundant, where we said like a budding and across the street to make it very clear of what we were trying to get to.
But I took at least an hour doing that.
I feel really good about that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, before we move to public hearing, Mr. Cranwick, do we have anyone online?
Mike Lamb.
Okay, and Mike Lamb is one of our consultants. Do we have a means, is this a star three, raise your hand, star six, unmute kind of a...
He's actually, should be on actual webex, so James, you can just unmute Mike.
Okay, yeah, if we can. And if you can let me know if other individuals may pop in for the public hearing session so we can be clear as to how they can be recognized and comment. So with that...
Mr. Chair, one important thing, did we want to show that before or after?
That's up to you. What do you want?
So, Mr. Chair, you may, and members of the commission, you may remember back in October of 2020 when Mike and Jennifer were up here and interviewing with you. Part of their proposal was to create a zoning video. That video has been completed. So the question is, would you like to see that video now or at the end?
How long is it?
Two minutes.
It's a minute and 45 seconds, I believe.
Please, James.
Let's do it.
Thank you.
Just a second. James, if you want to hand it back over to me.
Yeah.
Let me unmute my computer.
It's like a present.
Welcome to Brainerd.
It does say that.
I don't know why it moved.
Something happened with the download.
Very good. Very nice.
And the final version just will be a little higher quality. They just haven't finalized it yet, so just in case anyone thinks about that, just enough.
The file is gigantic, is essentially what it comes out to.
All righty, with that, again, any questions for staff or consultants before we move to public hearing? Seeing none. Going to call the public hearing. The order, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to receive comment directly relevant to the revised ordinance proposal that's under consideration tonight. I do want to note that there's a separate forum later on tonight for public comment on matters that are not on the agenda so that we're clear that there's another opportunity here for issues that aren't related to the zoning ordinance which we're about to open now. So we're going to open the public hearing at 6:34. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak to the zoning ordinance on the table tonight? Yes. Ms. Kenny, if you're interested in speaking, you come on up. I saw your hand first. If you'd introduce yourself. You've got to be speedy with the hand. If you can introduce yourself, please. Your name, where you live.
Vicki Kenny, Lake Shore, Minnesota. So I'm just here to make a request. I was really pleased to see that in the new zoning ordinance that you were reducing the size of homes so that would really encourage maybe more people, not just for our project, but for people in Brainerd to want to be able to build. The thing that I was disappointed in was the requirement of adding a garage. I feel like that does create a deterrent for some people that maybe being able to build a house, but now the added garage is another expense. So I would like you to reconsider. Garages are really designed for housing vehicles. I mean, they're used for all kinds of things, but primarily it's the design, you know, the purpose of a garage is to put a vehicle in. And you don't really have a code that requires people to park their cars in the garage. So requiring a garage is not about eliminating vehicles parked in driveways. It's really more about storage. And that's really evident based on the detached family dwellings where you have two different sizes of a garage. If you have a basement, it's a smaller garage. If it's a no basement, a larger garage. So clearly, the garage requirement is more about, let's not have barbecues and bicycles and lawn mowers outside. Let's have a place to store them. So my suggestion is to eliminate the garage requirement and instead require a storage building. If it's really about storing possessions, then that, a storage building should be adequate. You can still make some kind of ruling as far as the location of a new development on a lot so that there would be, you know, positions such that you could add a garage in the future. So that's not, you know, designed so that you couldn't put in a driveway or whatnot. So I think that for people that are wanting to build a home, to be able to do that, if you're really wanting growth in the city so they can save up money and build a garage later if possible. So that's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Well, I have one more thing. My second suggestion is if you are absolutely determined that every new construction has to have a garage, then I would just ask that you have a little bit more flexibility. I'm not sure what the garages are for the single detached. I couldn't find it in the code. It just said, "Look at the base unit," and it just says garage for a single detached. It does have dimensions for a single attached, so I'm assuming they're the same, but it's not in there. At least I couldn't find it. Maybe could. I sent you an email, Dave, but I think it was too late. If that's the case, you've got 12 by, I think, 20, I think it is, or I think for a basement and 16 by 20 without. If you could just be a little more flexible, some people might want a 12-foot wide garage, but maybe deeper. If you keep the square footage the same size, then allow people some flexibility to not have to have it exactly be that dimension. So 12 by 24, that would be the same square footage, just to give people some flexibility so you don't have this big massive garage. So just a thought to be a little bit more open for design styles for people. But I would really like you to consider storage buildings instead of demanding garages when people are building new construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny. Is there anyone else that would care to speak tonight? Please come up to podium, state your name, address.
Mike Murphy, 8371 Greenwood Road, Baxter, Minnesota. Can you go back to that picture on the, of the two buildings for me?
Actually, I think David.
I have it up.
Okay. Can you tell me what size lots these two buildings are on?
Mr. Murphy, direct the questions to me if you would, please. Thank you.
Can you tell me what size lots these buildings are on?
They would conform to the standards. Do you have the design of those, Mr. Chansky? These are basically provided as a general scope. What's the, well, this is generic here. I can't see what the zoning base is here, what the base district is.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I believe that the intent of the image is to provide an example of what the code is intending for the difference between garage front-loaded and garage setback.
Right, thank you.
Well, the intent is misleading here. Because a lot size in Brainerd is 25 feet. And you have two lots that's 50-foot, which is typically probably most lots in Brainerd. There's no way you could put that other house on a 50-foot lot. I can see it from here. So, and the other lot, maybe it's a 35-feet lot? It's not very wide. So we're not getting anywhere close to the same representation. So this is just propaganda up there, right there. I, over on Ninth Street, we have Ninth and, Ninth, between Maple and Norwood. I own four houses over in that area. There's 10 houses on that block, on North, East and West Side. With the new proposals and restrictions, 90% of them buildings could not be put back up there. Do people really feel that Brainerd is that ugly? That we aren't going to be able to put what we have that works? You're driving people out of this town by the restrictions. We have stuff. We live in the Brainerd Lakes area. We have a garage to put a car in. Where do we put our boat? Where do we put our snowmobiles? Where do we put a motorhome? Where do we put stuff? What gives you the right to restrict our building on our property? We pay the taxes on it. You don't. And we need to have this room. We need to be able to put what we want on it. Where's our freedom? Our forefathers fought for freedom to do, they came here because of, to eliminate the British restrictions. And now we're coming back into here? We're going into communism and you guys are helping if you pass this. I'd like to ask, how many people petitioned the council to say that you can't have garages in your, facing the street? Can anybody tell me?
We'll be taking your input, not necessarily your challenges.
Okay, well, I'm...
Give us the points that you're interested in us considering so that we can deliberate on those, Mr. Murphy.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a piece of property. Today, I could take and build on it. But I need to get it engineered. By the time I get it engineered, and if you pass this new building code, I can't build it. I have three projects planned. It's probably, I don't know, quarter, three-quarters of a million dollars worth of projects. You pass this code? Can't do any of them? Property's going to sit. I can't do anything with it. You've got that code book over there that's that thick. You've got the other one that's that thick. I can get that big one down. Just start ripping pages. Get rid of this, get rid of that, get rid of it. Get rid of our restrictions. Stop holding us down. None of this, you will comply. We have enough of that. From the president to our governor to our council. We're being controlled by communism. The governor restricted, I couldn't evict renters. It cost me over 20 grand. I can't get paid for it. I had people in there that I didn't rent to. I couldn't evict them. I couldn't do anything. I couldn't get money. They left, destroyed the place. I knew they were destroying it. Police were there all the time. Think anything would help me? No. Nobody helps the landlord. We're the slum of the earth. Don't you know that? That's the way we're treated in the city. And by the governor. And by the president.
Excuse me, Mr. Murphy, if you could help direct your key points to the ordinance before us. Those are the things that we can act on this evening. These are other issues that we can't and we don't have the ability to influence those, so thank you.
With the property, with the new ordinance, I would be able to put a triplex on this property. But I can't. Because it requires three garages and it's front-loaded. I couldn't do that. The only way I can have into this property is on a 50-foot lot. Now, how do you put three garages there and still come up with this garbage you got? And Dave said, Mike asked Dave if it could be changed by variants. Dave says, "Nope, that's the way it's going to be." That's the law. We can't build it. And who petitioned for these changes to make the restrictions? I'd like to see the petition. I'm petitioning you to open it up. Stop these restrictions. We want a garage under the whole house? A tuck-under? It should be able to be like it is now. If, I would bet if 80 or 90% of every building in Brainerd would not be able to be built with the new code changes because they're too restrictive. And we hire a consultant to take and do this. Don't we have staff that can do this? Isn't this part of the council's job? To come up with this stuff rather than hire everything out? We can't afford it. I'd like to reserve, to be able to come back after you guys have discussed it, to discuss what you have discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there anyone else that would care to speak to the revised zoning ordinance before us this evening? Ms. Cranwick, is there anyone else online at this time, please? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to speak to the commission regarding the revised ordinance under consideration tonight? Is there anyone else that would care to speak? Hearing none, I'm going to bring this back for discussion at the council, at the commission here. David, I think I heard very clearly some issues regarding garages, both from Ms. Kenny and from Mr. Murphy. And I think Ms. Kenny was suggesting some flexibility here, requirements of... Could you address that point for us, please, with the proposed ordinance, how that would be handled?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. So when it comes to the specific section she was discussing has to do with section, the proposed section 515-4-2B, I believe it is B. Yes, B6, garages. This is the section that governs attached, single-family residential structures. And that's duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes. In that section, it does state that each dwelling unit shall include a minimum of one enclosed garage stall that shall have the dimension of 12 feet by 20 feet. It does also have a point B that says, "For dwellings without basements, each dwelling unit shall include a minimum of one stall of 16 by 20 feet." I believe, looking at this intent, I believe, when you look at that, I would say contrary to what Ms. Kenny said, that 12 by 20 feet, that is intention of, that's for a vehicle. That without garages extending to 12 by 20, without basements extending by 12 by 20 is the intention of someone really doesn't have a lot of internal storage. So by extending it to the 12 but making it a little bit wider, you allow for someone to maybe put some shelves on the wall of a garage. So the intent there actually is to provide for vehicle storage with kind of that accessory of other storage, should that not be available in the main structure itself. As for single-family attached... As for single-family attached, that's section A of five-one-five dash four dash two. It actually does state under number four, it says, all single-family detached dwellings shall have a minimum of one enclosed garage, which may either be attached or detached to the principal structure. And then it just says the garage shall be considered accessory structure, must comply with the standards and regulations established in the zoning district. So even in your single-family attached, you also are going to be required to have a garage. In this situation, she's correct, it doesn't dictate size. However, when you look at just the size of the average vehicle in today's day, twelve by twenty kind of is your minimum when you look at the average wheelbase of a vehicle today. As for, so that's, that's the requirement to have the garage. As for, I'll try to address Mr. Murphy's comments on, especially the, the garages when you do not have an alley, so.
David, before you do that, to the, to staying on the first point for a minute, what would be the, what would be the process for, for not having a garage? I think that was sort of the, the angle I think.
In the current code, you would have to, and Jennifer can also jump in here, but you'd have to get a variance. You'd have to prove a hardship for having the garage. And that, that I think would be the main approach, would be to show, you know, I'm not requesting, I'm requesting not to have a garage for this reason, and be variance from the ordinance. And Jennifer can also speak to that as well.
Sure. Excuse me. I would say, actually, there's two avenues there. If you had a single property, the variance is likely the most straightforward process to follow, because obviously it is a dimensional standard, it's an area standard, which means you can grant a variance for that. The second would be in a development scenario, where the PUD is your tool that allows for flexibility from dimensional standards. That's generally the intent of a PUD. So if you had a multi-unit development, or, you know, a, a, a triplex and two single families or whatever, and you wanted to do storage buildings instead of garages, the PUD would be the route to go, because then you would be looking at flexibility from the standard to require the garage. So I think, I think it sort of depends on the scale of the project, but there are two different avenues. And I would actually say, just in terms of, I know we were talking about garages here, but any dimensional standard that we're talking about, those are essentially your two avenues. Like if, if, you can't give a variance from use, so use is different. But variances from dimensional standards, you've basically got two tools in your toolbox.
Thank you.
Yep.
And, and then David, I think, the, the key points that I, that struck me from Mr. Murphy's testimony, it's, can I replace what's there? Was, was important to me. And then the second is, if I'm in the process of developing and working with someone to develop a plan for a piece of property, what happens if, if I'm doing that while this is in motion? Does, do I, as the land, the property owner, have to, have to make it to the desk in time to set my plan down before the new ordinance takes effect, which may or may not allow? Those were two important things that I think I heard. And then you heard also some, some of the specifics about the garage fundage, but if you, in your comments, if you could respond to those two pieces as well.
Yeah, I'll respond to your questions first, Mr. Chair. So as, can I build, can people build what is there? In short, the answer is yes. That does, if there is something that is there that is non-conforming, there is per state statute and in the zoning code, the ability to construct what is there. And to be clear, what is there is the dimensions and layout of what is there. You have the legal right, as long as you've submitted, there, there are some time constraints, but you've, you've submitted to reconstruct, you have the right to reconstruct what you have there. If that time constraint lapses, then you have to conform to the new code. But you could construct what is, what is there if it is non-conforming. So then I'll just do that piece first. The second piece, quickly, Mr. Chair, remind me what the.
The second one was, if I'm working with a development.
Yes, thank you.
To develop plans to do this, it takes time, and I have some other process in motion here that may change the rules that I'm currently been working on.
Yep. So throughout the last number of months, I know we've been actually, with every person who has called, we've always been, first of all, I want to make people aware that, I think even the last six months or, or a year, we've been making people aware, once you put, in the future I might want to, that we are going to, we are looking at the zoning code. And as the code has been adopted, we've been telling people where we are at and what standards are going, looking like and going to be. As to kind of that rights, if someone had a submitted permit and it was under review or even, especially if it had been, the permit had been issued, then they would have the right to build under the code in which it was issued. If a permit has not been issued, or even under, even under review, then they would have to conform to the new code once it goes into effect, if a permit has not been issued.
Thank you. And then you had questions.
Yep, and then as to, as to the garage, you know, this was a discussion item, I think, throughout the last fifteen months, when we looked at, again, character. We really, when you looked at, this new code is formatted, it is formatted less about use. Our old code is use. You know, R1, R2, R3, B4, B5, B6, they're designed around specific uses. This new code, for the most part, especially around our residential areas, are designed around the character of, the existing character of the neighborhoods. And that's something that was also, that was called out very clearly in our comprehensive plan, and that's one of the reasons we went this direction. And so instead of focusing primarily on use, we're focusing on what is the existing neighborhood like? And so some of those areas that have those fifty-foot lots, those are generally our traditional neighborhood areas. And those traditional neighborhood areas tend to be, if they are not, most of them are, are, can be accessed by an alley. Mr. Murphy's properties that he just discussed, he does not have an alley. That is true. However, again, when you look at the character of it, there is, it is house up front, you know, the front of the house facing the street. It is generally detached, generally detached garage in the rear. There is no requirement, especially when I, in the previous section where I talked about that duplex, triplex, fourplex, that the garage be attached. It can be detached, it would just have to be behind the primary structure. Obviously, a fifty-foot wide lot, there's no space for the garage and detached garage generally right next to each other when you include the setbacks. But you could have a driveway that goes to the rear of the, you know, from the front, from the street, goes to the rear of the lot, and the structure be built behind the primary structure, again, assuming beats setbacks. So that's generally how on like a fifty-foot lot, you would address that, and that's because that's what the character is of the neighborhood. My former house in North Brainerd, that's how it was, it wasn't accessed by an alley. I had essentially two single-stall garages, but two-stall garages that were behind my primary structure. And so that is a way you could do it on, in a traditional neighborhood area. And again, that's because that is the predominant form in those areas. In this, you know, more contemporary neighborhoods, our CN1s and CN2s, the form of that area, you know, they were built out in the forties, fifties, sixties, wider lots, the homes built with attached garages. So part of that is, again, that's the character of each neighborhood, and that was, the code is designed to continue to enhance and encourage further development within that form.
Thank you, Ms. Chansky. Are there any other questions or clarification before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing at six fifty-nine and bring this back for discussion. So comments? Members of the commission or a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Erickson, please.
Comments? So, thanks for the presentation. Several things jumped out to me, or stood out to me throughout this process and, and tonight. The establishment of the form and standards, I really like, I feel like throughout this process, the plan that's been developed, I think it, I feel like it creates more latitude for not only the city, but also for the petitioners to, you know, do what they want to do with their property. As opposed to more of a use-based plan where it's, hey, I got this great idea for something I'd like to do in the city limits. And under the current code, it's, you know, look at, look at the code, no, sorry, doesn't meet X, Y or Z. But under this, this code, it gives more latitude for not only the city, but the petitioners say, okay, yeah, I think we can work with this, we can, you know, through different conditions or interim use or things like that, we can work with property owners to do and accomplish what they want to do with their, with their property. So establishing the form and standards, I think, is a huge highlight of this plan. Increased usability, I think you call it the tabular and the diagrammatic, just for me, it's increased usability, increased readability for potential developers, residents, landowners, is a huge upgrade from the, the current plan or current ordinance. You had mentioned, Jennifer, the increase in administrative permits. And to me, that's huge in reducing the regulatory burden. We have an existing code. The city operates under that, from state statute, that authorizes communities to do planning, to do ordinances, and to enforce those ordinances. Excuse me. And I think that this one, this update provides far more flexibility and reduces that administrative burden. And so that one is a huge plus when it comes to this one for me. Those are three comments I wanted to make.
Thank you, Ms. Erickson. Other comments? Ms. Woodward.
I would like to just reiterate a small portion of that and speak to Ms. Hanskamp's team and say that I am incredibly grateful for their expertise and their professionalism. And personally, I do not regret the decision to hire your team for this project. Your qualifications, none of us are qualified to do that. I myself could not have undertaken a project like that. And I think that your, your contribution to the city of Brainerd is appreciated. You've made this much easier for all of us to go through. You've made it easier for people who, who want to do a project in the city of Brainerd to be able to look at the code and see that there are projects they can do in the city of Brainerd. And I know it, it seems like there's still a lot of regulation there to some people. But it's still, it's a step in the right direction. It's, it's good.
You're here on that. Thank you, Ms. Woodward.
Yes.
Mr. Gorham, please.
I would just like to say, this is, this process has been, what I look for in city government, it's been fair, it's been open, it's been fun at times, which isn't really important, because otherwise you can get, we can get so lost in the weeds in this, and we lose the, the human sense. We've, we've, we've kept moving at a good pace. In terms of our authority, it's clear, it's in the, it's in the city charter that there's a planning commission, and we have a job to do. And I think we've done a heck of a job. We couldn't have done it without, without Jennifer, without Mike. It's, it's been, like I say, I think there's been so many opportunities for the public to get involved, it's been a transparent process, and it, it really checks all the boxes that I would look for in terms of how you do something like this. I'm proud of the work we've done, and I look forward to voting for this.
Thank you, Mr. Gorham.
Mr. Chair.
Deager, please.
Okay, I'm going to say kind of the same thing. Yeah, I saw that coming, right? But anyways, I'm, I'm going to say kind of the same thing. I've spoken about this a little bit before, but one of the things I really love about this commission is that we rarely agree on everything. Almost, almost never do we go down this panel, everybody's exactly on the same page, and I actually think that's a really good thing. Many of the topics that came up tonight, we, we spent quite some time talking through. And, and there were members of this commission that were kind of on one side, kind of on the other. But at the end of the day, I feel like consensus, general consensus was found, and, and, and we, we decided to move forward as a team with none of the commission, but our partners that we've partnered with, Mike and Jennifer have been outstanding, city staff has done a great job. So I'm, I'm, much to your point, Don, very, very pleased with just how the process of government played out over the past fifteen months. So I just want to say that first of all. Thank you so much for Jennifer and Mike for your time. It's been, you've made this process palatable, easy to consume, easy to process and, and easy to move forward. David and city staff has done a fantastic job on the documentation side as well. So kudos to everyone in this, in the, on this team. I also want to make another point, especially to some of, of the members in the forum here, and that is, is that there is no such thing as a perfect document, ever, in any city government, ever. There, there is no perfect document. What, what you, what, what we are, what we are charged with is to try to find the most possible common ground, put that in place, but still have avenues so that applicants, even when common ground can't be found, still have an opportunity to bring forth an idea or some, some degree of nuance that isn't found in that code, so that, so that their voice can be heard and, and can be considered, projects can be considered. So this ordinance should not be thought of as the, you know, end-all-be-all of all government from here on forth, and this is it, dang it. If it's not in here, you're done, you get that, it's not, that's not at all it. This should be thought of as a living document that we are going to be charged with living with for quite some time. And, and I predict that there will be lots of discussions on, on decisions that were made over the past fifteen months, whether they were the correct ones and how we can even improve upon those. So I'm very enthused about what we've done, and I just want to say thank you to everyone involved, and I will one hundred percent be supporting this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deager. And I think, you know, I, I concur with all of these very good points, and I'm not going to repeat them. Well said, and, and thank you for taking words out of my mouth. The, the one thing that I truly, truly appreciate about what has been accomplished with this revised ordinance is the many, many, many fewer nonconformities, which is going to be tangible for the citizens here of the city by not having to go through variance processes to largely do what are reasonable things for their property. And I think that, that is going to be something that the citizens are going to truly benefit from here, amongst all of the other good things that, that we've already referenced here. So with that, I would be looking for a motion from, from the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Erickson, please.
I'd move to, move to recommend approval of the proposed zoning code and zoning map as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Woodward, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Let's go to a voice vote, please. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, that motion carries. Thank you. And, Ms. Murphy, I would grant you up to three minutes if you had, you asked for an opportunity to speak on the decision, would you care to speak on?
Yeah.
Give you a few, one, come up to the podium again, please.
David said I could build a garage in the back. It happens to be that the backyard is roughly sixteen feet higher than where the building would be. And it says you've got to have a driveway three feet from the property line. And if you have a twelve-foot driveway, that's fifteen feet, and now you've got a ten-foot setback on the other side, that leaves me twenty-five feet. Boy, I can make one hell of a building, can't I? It doesn't make sense. It's on a hill. Why can't you have three garage doors in there so you can put stuff and use it? Building's on top. That's common sense. I don't see any of that here tonight, when it comes to this part of this ordinance. I just, it just doesn't make, and my other properties, if a tornado came through and tore them down, can I build them then? Where they were? They're non-conforming, because some of them are, back when we had a building zone where we could take and build on our property and use our property, it was built. Now I couldn't build it there because it'd be too close to the property line. It's my property, how come I can't build on it? It doesn't make sense. Use common sense. It's not very common, but try to find some.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. All right, with that. All right, with that, um, we're moving on to new business.
Ms. Chair.
Before we have, yes.
Would you happen to know next steps on your recommendation?
Excuse me. Thank you very much for that omission.
Yep, so your recommendation, uh, will now go before the city council for their consideration. Uh, it'll go into the form of proposed ordinance number 1527, which will go before the city council for its first reading and consideration, uh, this upcoming Monday, March 21st. Uh, should the council assume, hold that first reading, no problems. It'll then go before the council again for the city charter on April, Monday, April 4th for its second reading and then consideration for adoption, assuming they do approve, uh, they do vote to adopt what is purported will be ordinance number 1527. On April 4th, the new zoning code would then go into effect one week later. So, uh, I believe it'd be April, uh, 11th.
April 11, David, you said?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for, um, following up on that. Okay, that brings us to item 7A, interim use permit for a commercial greenhouse. I think, uh, David, could you set that up for us, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. So Mr. Steve Zelinski, uh, he has submitted a request on behalf of yesterday's gone for interim use permit to operate a commercial greenhouse supporting the operations of licensed food establishment. Uh, it's on an unaddressed parcel with the ID number of 41241525. Um, some details quickly about this, uh, si- um, request. Uh, the parcel is currently located in a B3 central business district. Um, however, should the council adopt, um, the, upon the adoption of the new zoning code, it will be zone TC1 Town Center. I'm gonna jump a little bit ahead into, into the findings of fact because I believe it really kind of sets up the rest of what, what I'm going to say here is Mr. Zelinski is currently proposing, um, constructing, uh, the, the zoning code, uh, with, uh, a double-layered six-millimeter polyethylene film. This is a flexible rolled material. Um, currently, in the current zoning code, uh, these commercial greenhouses, as was adopted by the council in 20, in October of 2020, um, upon recommendation of the planning commission, are not allowed, uh, it, roll of flexible roll material is not allowed to be used. However, um, Mr. Zelinski again would like to use that. Um, and the issue did go before, upon his request, uh, made a request to the council. Um, and commi- uh, council president Brad Bevins, um, did, uh, respond to his request to have the council consider that issue. And the ca- staff was directed on March 7th, uh, to include flexible roll material as an allowed greenhouse covering in the proposed zoning code. So in the code that you just recommend adopting, um, flexible roll material is allowed covering for all greenhouses. So with that being said, because obviously that current, we are under the current code right now, not the new zoning code, um, any approval of this interim use permit will need the condition, uh, that it is contingent upon adoption of the proposed zoning code. So because of that, in our findings of fact, we used the new zoning code for our findings of fact because without the adoption of the new zoning code, uh, Mr. Zelinski's qu- request could not be accepted. So jumping back quickly back, the operation of a greenh- of a commercial greenhouse supporting operations licensed food establishment is an interim use permit, uh, is allowed by interim use permit in the town center. Uh, this is, in the new zoning code is 515-3-15A. He is, uh, going, uh, requesting to use plan and using a double-layered six-millimeter polyethylene film, which under the new pro- uh, zoning code would be allowed. Per that struct- per that section of the code, str- the, the greenhouse shall not exceed 15 feet in height. Uh, the proposed greenhouse height is 12 feet 10 inches high, 20, and then it shall be 24 feet wide and approximately 72 feet long. Um, as you might remember, part of the, when Mr. Zelinski actually first brought this before the city, um, the planning commission in 2020, the reason he did so is because the lot in which he requests to put this on is not, um, uh, uh, what's the, could, um, is not located on the same lot as yesterday's gone. Um, except accessory structures have to be on the same lot. Um, therefore, the, the amendment, as it was made in 2020, allowed them to be on a separate lot, um, provided that it is within 150 feet of the business it is supporting. And this is obviously, it's right across an alley, it's only 20 feet away. The structure, according to the new code, shall meet the setback requirements of the, of the base zoning code, because again, it could be somewhere other than town center or 10 feet from all property lines, whichever is greater. Since in the town center district, uh, there is a potential for zero yard setback, um, the requirement for greenhouse would be that it'd be 10 feet away in this requirement because that would be greater. Uh, Mr. Zelinski is proposing to have a 10-foot setback on the northern property line, six, 16 feet from the southern property line, and then the front yard setback of 24 feet and rear yard setback of 20. So he meets those separate requirements. The other requirement, that there be no outdoor storage. Indoor storage shall be limited to material incidental to the operation of the greenhouse. The greenhouse can't become a de facto storage unit. Should the licensed food establishment or floral shop cease operations, the greenhouse must be removed in so that in 60 days. And that sales shall only occur in the principal place of business that is supported by the greenhouse. So essentially, the greenhouse can't become its own primary use. Um, you'll see in, we'll just point out, because it is in the site plan, Mr. Zelinski provided that the applicant has proposed to construct a chain link fence around the property as the greenhouse is approved and constructed. And this fence will meet the requirements, um, that in 515-411 for fence standards. So it will meet that. Um, and finally, because this is over, the structure is over 200 square feet per new code, uh, building permit will be required to be issued. Um, we have not received any, um, con- no one contacted the community development department regarding concerns or objections to this interim use permit, uh, request. And so with that, Mr. Chair, I'll take any immediate questions you have. Otherwise, I encourage you to, uh, conduct the public hearing on this interim use permit.
Thank you, Dirk Chansky. Are there any questions of staff on the proposal? Yes, Mr. Gorham, please.
Uh, were the, uh, were the flexible materials part of what was, um, approved by the planning commission in, I believe, October of 2020? Was that part of it?
No, the original, eh, as approved by the planning commission in 2020 was to have no flexible roll material, only more rigid paneled material.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Woodward, please.
Mr. Chansky, if the applicant, um, my question relates to the 60-day rule. Um, if the applicant permanently ceases, um, operations, then I understand the 60-day rule. Does that also apply to temporary? Because I know like my bookstore was closed down for 60 days unexpectedly and it was not by choice. Um, so I'm wondering if that would apply in this circumstance if they are unexpectedly closed down, not by choice, would that apply?
It would not apply. This is, the language here is geared towards that they are ceasing oper- they have chosen, they are closing up shop. They are not planning on reopening.
Permanently choosing to.
Permanent reclo- yes, it was not a-
Okay, thank you very much for the clarification.
Something by their choice, let's put it that way, not by some governmental entity shutting them down.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Okay, hearing none. Let's go to, um, public hearing, open the public hearing at 7:19. Uh, welcome, Mr. Zelinski. Do you have any comments that you would like to offer on your application or any points of clarification? If so, please come up to the podium and state your name and address.
Steve Zelinski, 15965 County Road 25, Brainerd. And I've been enough of these beings and I know I only get one chance to talk. So I have a question on number three. What if it's this new, uh, zoning map and code is not adopted? Where does it go to then? If it's, if it's approve, if you approve it, but the city council says, no, we're not adopting this code, then what happens to my plan?
Okay, and Mr. Chansky, could you please address that question? So if the, if the ordinance, revised ordinance is not adopted by city council at their upcoming meeting, what happens to Mr. Zelinski's proposal? Please.
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Chair. Um, so if the council does not adopt the zoning, the proposed zoning code for any reason, then obviously the current zoning code stands as remains the, the code for the city and Mr. Zelinski's, uh, proposal would not qualify under the current code. Um, and that, that was, may I believe, was made clear to the city council when this was presented on March 7th, that if they did not, you know, their direction was to include it in the new code and if they did not approve the new code, then obviously, um, the, the direction that they took, Mr. Zelinski's greenhouse request would still be, uh, non-conforming to the code.
So then I would go back to the city council again and ask to be put in that code?
So, so it, it, the pe- the, the piece of non-conformity under the current code would be just simply the fabric, is that?
Correct, of the use of the roll material.
So your recourse, um, at that point, I think, Mr. Zelinski, might be to, to choose a different material or, or there would have to be a, a change to the current ordinance, which would send us through, quite frankly, the process you did in 2020. You came here, asked us to amend the language to allow a greenhouse, so, um, but I encourage you to have faith. Have faith in, in our city council, uh, on this, so. So that's, that's a key question. Are, are there other points that you would like to bring up here as we, we kind of deliberate this permit, uh, as, as David's?
Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, are there questions for the applicant?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Jager, please.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Zelinski, thanks for coming, coming tonight. Uh, one good question, um, some greenhouses take the roll covering off in the winter time months, uh, some leave it on. Do you have any-
We're going year-round. That's why we're using this double ply because it's baffled and heated within the two baffles.
Understood. That's, that's what I wanted to clarify.
We're going year-round and they last about four or five years. And the city council even said, again, we look at it every three years and make sure we got, yeah, good plastic on there.
Understood. Thank you, no more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Zelinski. If, if, if we do have some questions in our deliberations here, if you'd be willing to come back up. Thanks. Okay, with that, any other, um, particular questions? Yes, thank you. Please come up, uh, state your name and address again.
Mike Murphy, 8371 Greenwood Road, Baxter, Minnesota. Uh, speaking of this plastic, it looks just as good as any hard material. I have it on a greenhouse. It's been on there for 10 years and it's just as solid as it was when I put it on. It's fantastic stuff. Why it's not in the code? Because we have dictatorial government that wants to shut things down. It needs to be changed. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to the, um, proposal here for an interim use permit for greenhouses in the town center or B3 zoning district? Is there anyone else that would care to speak on the issue? And last time, is anyone else, uh, and, and Mr. Granvik, is there anyone online? Thank you, sir. So with that, are there any, um, questions of staff or the applicant before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing at 7:23 and discussion by the commission on the application.
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Erickson.
Just a comment, um, so as this came to council, of course, uh, this came to the planning commission, predated my time on the planning commission. I did go back and watch the deliberation. When it came before council initially, um, council's intent was to let, uh, Mr. Zelinski, um, have this greenhouse and, um, I voted in favor then as well as, um, when it came back. And so I'm gonna remain consistent with that. I want to see this happen, so I'm gonna support it. Um, I know there's a difference in, um, nuance on the material, but, um, make my intention clear that I'm gonna support it.
Thank you, Ms. Erickson. Any other discussion, comment? Seeing none, I'd be looking for, oop, Mr. Gorham, thank you.
Um, I have no quibbles with the greenhouse. Steve, I want to see you get the greenhouse. You're gonna get the greenhouse. We're, the government will approve this. This is gonna happen. This'll be a good thing.
Find a way.
I have some quibbles with the process. I'm a little confused by the process because it really seemed like we said no soft-sided and then they went to the city council and I thought they understood that. And then I was a little confused at the shock of, of the city council when they were like, oh, we, we said, we said they couldn't have a soft-sided, uh, a greenhouse? I thought that was kind of clear. So I, I got some quibbles with the process, but with that, Steve having a greenhouse, I've got no problem. We, we, we can work with that. I was a little confused with the process and I, I felt like the city council, I wish they would have known what they were approving, what they, what they approved in the fall of 2020. I think they should have known what was in there and they shouldn't have been surprised, um, uh, when, uh, when, when, when this, well, the controversy came up. There shouldn't have been any surprise. It was pretty explicit what, uh, what we were hoping for. But with all that being said, I'm gonna support the greenhouse and support, uh, support them on what the other changes that we're looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Gorham. Other comments? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move to approve the interim use permit as presented.
Second.
Uh, so we have a, a motion to approve the interim use permit and I, do I understand contingent?
Yeah, I was just to, just going to clarify.
Thank you.
Contingent on the approval of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, and a second by Mr. Gorham. Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, that motion carries. Uh, Director Chansky, next steps, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair, so this will also go before the city council for consideration on Monday, March 21st during their meeting at 7:30 PM here in the cha- here in the council chambers.
Excellent. And welcome back and thank you and, and, and please be optimistic. I look, I look forward to having fresh greens. All righty, that brings us to item 7B on the agenda, interim use permit for a short-term rental. Uh, Director Chansky, can you please set this up for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Kelly Woodman has submitted a request for interim use permit to operate, operate a short-term rental at 704 First Street. So bear with me as we work through this because this one's a, while like the other one, we're kind of in this, in this limbo period here as we're still under the old code, but anticipating a, a, an adoption of the new code very shortly. Um, so you'll see this, um, the findings effect on this one is a little long because we're kind of bouncing back a little bit forth with what the current code said and what the new code says. The new code is pretty close, I would say, it's 95% of the old code. Um, however, I think it would be, James and I pointed out a little bit maybe during some discussions the last few months that there is some, um, how this code currently functions is a little clunky. And so the wording in the new code kind of streamlines things a little bit. So we'll, um, share how they are the same and how they're a little different as I walk through this really quick. So 704 Fur is currently in an R1 district and upon adoption of the new zoning code will be in a T and one, traditional neighborhood one district. Um, obviously, in both of these districts, in R1 and the T and one, a short-term rental is allowed, but only by interim use permit. Uh, under that, under section five, what will be section 515-3-34 of, um, the new code and under 515-5, 54-4.6 of the old code, um, there are some minimum standards that are required for short-term rentals. The first of the minimum rental period shall not be, uh, more than 28 consecutive nights. So I think in the new code, we changed that also to say maximum because we realized minimum didn't make sense there. I think that was a typo in the original. Um, so it's how it says maximum. Um, and that's generally by how, sh- when you look at stays, um, that a long-term rental kind of, that 28-day mark is about when it switches over. So 28, less than 28 is considered short, more than 28 is considered long. Uh, the permit holder of the short-term rental must apply and receive an interim use permit. So obviously, that's why we're here tonight. Um, however, if it is an owner-occupied rent, uh, dwelling, they don't need an interim use permit. But obviously, in this, in this situation, uh, this, the dwelling is not owner-occupied, so that's why we're here getting the interim use permit. Some of the information that the interim use permit shall provide, uh, it says all information required for a conditional use per- for a conditional use permit. Um, this has been dropped in the new zoning code only because the submittal list for the short-term rental, what we're asking for, is already very detailed. In the current code, it's asked for a floor plan of the structure, including the number of bedrooms with dimensions and also the accommodations. In the new code that you just recommended to adopt, um, we don't require the floor plan, however, we do ask them to state the number of bedrooms with dimensions and all other sleeping accommodations. Um, Ms. Woodman did provide that. You can see that in, in your, um, in the packet of the bedroom sizes. She included what kind of beds are currently in there. Um, section 425, what will be 425.8, well, actually, it's currently .810, um, states- states that rooms used exclusively for sleeping purposes shall have a minimum superficial floor area of seventy square feet for one person, ninety square feet for two persons, and the required superficial floor area shall be increased at the rate of fifty square feet for each occupant in excess of two. So when you look at the sizes of each of the bedrooms as Ms. Woodman listed, unfortunately, the space for, um, room number five does not meet that requirement, so it is ineligible to be used as a rental bedroom. Um, also she listed that total square footage of the house is three thousand square feet with a kitchen, dining room, living room, wifi, theater room, and laundry room. Also required is a two-scale site plan which shows locations and dimensions of the property, lines, dwelling unit intended for licensing, accessory structures, parking areas, shoreline recreational facilities. Uh, a GIS map is attached, uh, to your document of the, of the property. Plan for garbage disposal be permitted, uh, needs to be had by the permit holder. Uh, the applicant, applicant, she indicated that she had, does have a contract with Waste Partners for weekly pickup and that she will bring the garbage to the street on a Wednesday night for pickup on Thursday morning. And they must provide a pet policy. The applicant indicates that she, they will have a no pet policy. Also, the permit holder must, shall submit, uh, sorry, shall post emergency contact information, insurance entries, location, fire extinguishers, and the short-term rental. Um, the applicant will verify with staff, uh, the emergency contact information location. So they will have that posted and I'll get to, um, one of our comment, our condition, recommended commission, conditions on that near at the end. Uh, currently, the code requires that the permit holder provide the name, address, and phone number for the management agent or local contact for all property owner, to all property owners within a hundred feet of the property boundary. Um, and then provide, in, with intent, if that changes, provide them with an information change. In the new code, we're changing that up a little bit, um, and actually saying that they will provide the information to the city and then we will make that accessible at all times on the city's website, so that it's not just the property owners in the, in the vacant, in the vicinity that then they have to keep it. We're just saying we'll put it on the city's website for anyone who might have concerns or complaints. Uh, the, the permit holder must also disclose in writing the following information. Obviously, the, the, the contact information for the management, managing agent, the maximum number of guests allowed on the property. The applicant indicates that they will be allowing nine total. Uh, the maximum number of vehicles, recreational vehicles, trailers allowed on the property. You'll, you see in the, uh, site map, um, there is a thirty-six by, there is a front driveway, um, off of Seventh Street as well as a thirty-six by thirty-six rear parking area. Um, should allow for at least a total of six off-street parking spaces at the property. Um, the property rules for use of exterior fin, for, uh, features, um, shall be, shall be published. Um, she indicates to the applicant that the, that her guests will have access to all fence, to the areas fenced in the backyard. Um, and then applic, uh, applicable sections or, or discovering those knows park and pets, so they will be, um, she has been notified of that and she will be required to make, make that information also in, available to her occupants. The current code says that occupancy of a short-term rental shall not be, shall be limited to not more than two people per bedroom. The new proposed zoning code does increase that to three, however, that number is still governed by section four twenty-five eight one zero. Uh, for, section four twenty-five, for those unaware, that is our rental housing maintenance code. And because these short-term rentals also are required to be a licensed short-term rental, that is why that section comes into play here. So in here, we did the calculation, um, and so you can see that per bedroom, bedroom one would be allowed the maximum of three occupants under the new code, um, as well as bedroom four, but however, bedrooms, uh, two and three would only allow, be allowed for two people, again, due to the size of the room. Under the old, under the current code, it'll be, um, while she's under the current code, it'll be limited to two persons per room. Um, obviously rooms for sleeping shall be provided with egress, smoke detectors, again, those are the items, uh, required under, also under the rental housing code. Um, we do wanna note that she actually currently does have a rental license for, says, as a, as a single-family property and the property was last inspected on, uh, twelve twenty-one of twenty twenty-one and, and passed all building rental code requirements at that time. Shall be connected to city water and sewer. It is connected to city water and sewer. Uh, we do wanna note in the new ordinance, we actually believe we moved that requirement. Did we?
We added a septic.
We added, there is a septic, assuming that they get a, a, a certified septic compliance from the county. Um, short-term rental, a full bathroom. There are three on this property. Um, the applicant is not proposing using any recreational vehicles, tents, accessory structured fish houses for occupancy. That is prohibited by the code. The current code requires that there be a physical demarcation on the property lines. The new, uh, this has been dropped from the new zoning code, however, that the property's backyard is fully fenced in. Uh, the permit holder shall report detailing short-term rental by recording full name, address, phone number, and vehicle license number of guests using the rental. That's still in there. Uh, the short-term rentals shall be licensed rental unit. We already mentioned that. They are. And then the, obviously, just stating for the applicant's knowledge or for other those looking at that, the planning commission, because this is interim use, may, uh, apply reasonable, impose reasonable conditions. The permit holder must post their permit number on all print poster and web advertisements. James, is that, I believe that one's a new one, correct? That was in, that was in the old one, still in, still in the new one as well. Um, so if they're posting on Verbo or Airbnb, they should be posting that, that they have a license and what their license number is. That they be granted state and local tax numbers, including hotel motel tax, sales tax. The applicant has contacted her CPA and is handling all those requirements for her. Um, also, the current code says additional to interim use permit, the short-term rentals run, rented for less than seven days are considered hotel and required to have a Minnesota Department of Health license. In the new code, we changed that wording up just a little bit, saying it is on the applicant to, to, um, reach out to the Minnesota Department of Health regarding any licensers because there may be, if they're not, for example, if they're not ho, gonna do less than seven nights, maybe their minimum is eight nights. For example, it might be different. Um, this woman has, uh, of, um, contacted the Department of Health, um, and they believe, do have some requirements that she will, a, a license she will have to get. They will inspect the property. Um, however, they have stated and believe they will only do so once the city provides their approval, so they don't wanna approve anything, obviously, before the, the local jurisdiction does so. And obviously before, um, we will also require her to obviously show, provide us proof of that, um, licensure from the state. Um, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, we are recommending that it just be one condition on this, um, and that that be, that the property be re-inspected by the building inspector and the fire marshal. Again, it was inspected in December, but now this is gonna be short-term. We just recommend that, um, they just get in there one more time before, she begins operation as a short-term rental. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll take any initial questions that the commission has.
Thank you, David. And to be clear, um, have you received any written comments, um, since, uh, since you put, put this memo together at all about this property?
We have not received any written comments or verbal comments.
Thank you. Okay, questions of staff before we move to public hearing? Yes, Mr. Erickson?
Question for David. Um, you said they currently have a rental license. You know how it's being used. Is it sitting empty or do they, have they had tenants in the recent past or they've rented it out before?
I believe they have had tenants in the, in the recent past, but now they do wanna go down this route of using it as a, as a short-term rental, being able to rent out, um, the rooms and not just have it as a single-family rental.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Other questions of staff? Director Chansky, um, to your point about, um, as with the previous interim use permit that we heard, we're in this transitional period. The decision is not ours to make, so we're trying to, to, to try and make this as seamless as possible for our applicants, um, so that they come here once and they know what they wanna, they know what to do based on decisions on the ordinance. So, my question to you, I see a few places where numbers are gonna be different. And I'm trying to imagine how we could, how we could manage that so that if, if the revised ordinances are not adopted, the applicant still is able to go forward with an interim use permit, presuming that the, the council approves that. And so I'm, I'm trying to imagine sort of conditions that may anchor and allow us to move forward, applicants done, and then their course of action is determined by the city council's action on the ordinance.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. So I think the main changes, and, and James, if I miss anything, feel free to chime in here. I think the main differences um, between the new code and the old code, um, as they stand now when it comes to this application are occupancy, so regularly two, two, the current code says two per bedroom. The current code allows up to three if the size is right. Um, as well as the other big difference would be providing contact information to every property owner within a hundred feet. We're just saying, give it to us. We'll put it on the website. Um, I believe those are the, the, really the primary ones. Um, the property demarcation one, you know, I think hers is already, you know, pretty clear. If you look at that property, they have a fence in the back and they even have some fence, some nice little decorative fence posts out front, which kind of show their front property line as well. So I think really what it'd be probably pretty simple is to say, put it conditional as, you know, if the new, you know, until, you could do it, until the new code is adopted, they have to comply with the old code, or if the new code is not adopted, just reminder that they can still operate, but they would have to operate it under the old code, so they would have, that means going down to maximum of two people per bedroom. They would need to provide contact information to everyone in a, within a hundred feet, um, those main items. So I think if that answers your question, Mr. Chair, you could just say, maybe make a contingent on, you know, um, if the new code isn't adopted, or at least while we're under the old code, you must comply with the old code and then once the new code's adopted, you can move over to those standards.
And then, um, one question about the rental license. So, uh, interim use permit is not valid if the conditions are not upheld or, or, or implemented. And so one of those conditions either on either of the, um, versions of the ordinance is sort of the, the rental license piece. And so if the applicant were to let the rental license lapse for whatever reason, um, out of town, um, what have you, right? Does that invalidate the interim use permit? Or are they simply not able to apply it until they get the license? Can you help me think about that piece?
So I think how the ordinance would read is that they would be in violation of the interim use permit. It doesn't automatically, as you read the code, doesn't necessarily automatically, um, invalidate it. It mean they're in violation of it. And then what would have to happen generally, um, one of the processes is we would bring it before the planning commission, who then make a recommendation to the city council, whether or not to, um, remove that interim use permit. Um, again, nice thing about, one reason I believe that the council and planning commission went this way with interim use permits, which I agree with, is that it follows the property owner, not the property. So for example, should Ms. Woodman no longer own the property, sell the property, the interim use permit then does go away. Um, so then a new person, if they wanna do a short-term rental there, would have to come back and go through the same process.
So, uh, as I'm looking at the new ordinance, or the, new ordinance, the proposed ordinance, um, on page one twenty-five, under the interim use administrative steps, termination and interim permit, interim use shall terminate when any of the following events occur in, under D2, upon violation of conditions under which the permit was issued, and that's why I'm coming back to saying now, if I allow the rental permit to lapse, you know, um, it, it, you know, without any intent, that seems to say to me that the interim use permit is now terminated and they would have to come back again with a new application and such. Can you help me?
So I think part of that, um, would be it's an element of administration. How do you choose to administrate this, this ordinance? If you want, if, I think if the planning commission and council wants to hold the line of our policy is you're done, you must come back because it was, it was void for one day, two days, three days. Or is it a policy of it lapsed? We provide that information like we do normal of, hey, your rental license lapsed, you are in violation, and then they get a certain amount of days to correct it. You know, my recommendation would go that route of rental license lapsed. They're gonna go through the renewal process like every other out, every other person, every other rental, so they'll be notified that the renewal period has started and such. You know, from a zoning perspective, if it lapsed, um, James would also obviously know and would send probably a sec, a separate letter saying, not only are you not a licensed rental, you're also in violation of your interim use permit. You need to comply. So whether or not it's an automatic, you're done, you gotta come back and restart, or we give them a kind of a grace period of, you've been notified, you're in violation, you have ten days to comply. I think that's a policy decision. My recommendation would be that information, you've, you're in violation, you have X amount of time to comply.
Thank you. Other questions of staff? All right, with, seeing none, we will go to public hearing at seven forty-six and I believe the applicant is present. Okay, Ms. Wood, Woodman, thank you. Um, is there anything additionally that you'd like to add to your proposal or any aspects of your proposal you care to explain to the, to the commission? Please come up to the podium. If you'd state your name, address, and for the record.
My name is Kelly Woodman. Address is two four three one Cottagewood Drive Southwest, Nisswa. Sorry, I just moved, so. Unlike our last, uh, applicant, I've never been to one of these meetings before, so bear with me. But I just wanted to say thank you, the staff at the city has been very, very helpful and guiding me through this process. Uh, the seven oh four First Street property was my home up until a few months ago when we moved to Nisswa. And it, my motivation for doing this is not to become a landlord by any means. It's more because I love the property, I love North Brainerd, and I feel like it would be a valuable asset to the city of Brainerd. There are not currently any registered Airbnb or VRBOs in the city limits of Brainerd that I or people I've talked to on the city are aware of. Um, and I've had several conversations with people in my neighborhood and they all have been very supportive, so I'm just wanted to put that out there and say thank you. So far, everybody's been great to work with. Did you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you. Any, any questions for the applicant before we, if you'll just be, be willing to come back up if our deliberations lead that way, I would appreciate that. So, um, any, uh, points of discussion before we close the public hearing or any additional questions that we have? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at seven forty-eight and discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Yeager, thank you.
Interesting application here. I appreciate the applicant coming forward, bringing this. Uh, I will say that, uh, upon reading this, I set off on a little journey to read all about VRBOs, especially in residential neighborhoods and I just, I'm gonna put on two hats here. My first hat is from the planning side, uh, from, from what we do here, and that is, is that a lot of the findings, or a lot of what I ran across today seem to, to mention or, or to shed light upon the fact that, that one tremendous attribute of the, of the short-term rental is, is that those buildings tend to be better kept than long-term rentals. And, and the mindset here is that somebody who's in a short-term rental process is continually competing for, for somebody new to come in and, and stay at the residence. So that, that really excites me. Not that we have a problem with, uh, long-term rentals, but it, it's certainly something to consider. And I'm gonna put on my other hat here and, and that's the HRA hat, and I'm gonna say, and, and where I'm going with this is, is that also what I read, uh, or discovered today is that one curious thing about when the VR, if, if the VRBO system takes momentum, especially in neighborhoods, one downside to that is, is they have the potential to force long-term families out. They're far more lucrative in the short term. Landlords learn this and then all of a sudden families that are renting a house at X amount of dollars per month are now being hit the street because now I can put fourteen people in here a month and, and double or triple my money. So I think that, that's, those are the two concern, you know, the two things that kind of came to mind when I was reading about this, but either way, it's interesting and, uh, I'm, I'm gonna be supporting this to move forward, uh, just, uh, from, from the standpoint of. I'm, I'm going to be supporting this to move forward, uh, just from, from the standpoint of, uh, I will always generally come back to, I like people in neighborhoods no matter what. And, and as long as the, the structures are maintained and are meeting all of our other ordinance and code of conduct for rental, I have no problems with this. So, uh, I'm, I'm going to be in support of this tonight. And I, yeah, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yeager. Other comments or discussion?
I do have a comment.
Mr. Erickson, please.
I see your two hats, and I'll raise your third. I would come at it, in addition to those, I, um, I think about this in terms of an economic development, um, aspect too. You know, Brainerd has, um, you know, one hotel establishment, and, you know, for a lot of times, more and more people on vacationing are not even really considering hotels. They're far more looking for, um, a unique lodging experience such as this application is presenting. And so right now, you know, oftentimes, visitors to Brainerd are, um, forced to seek lodging, uh, outside of Brainerd. Um, and as such, they're staying in Baxter. Where the hotels are, they're eating in Baxter, they're shopping in Baxter. So I think this is a tremendous opportunity for, uh, Brainerd business owners, um, Brainerd residents and the city. Certainly there's concerns, neighborhood concerns. Um, I think the way that the new code is handling this, and how this interim use is handling this, you know, this touches on parking, this touches on noise, it touches on, uh, the capacity, the trash, kind of all those points of concern, all those points of interest, which are valid concerns. Um, but I too, I wanted to make that point, um, and touch on a few of those things, but I too would be in support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Ms. Woodward, please.
Um, if I may, I have a question for Mr. Chansky, I believe. Um, so in regards to the permit application process, there's, I believe there's a requirement for a county permit. Does this fulfill that requirement?
County permit in which?
Is the county, is Crow Wing County currently regulating how many VRBOs and Airbnbs? I thought there was a-
That does not comply, uh, apply to the city of Brainerd, as we are a statutory city. We supersede the county in this area.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Seeing no more, I, I, I feel like there's a couple of conditions that probably ought to travel with this one, just to make it resilient to whatever happens with the ordinance change. I'm thinking that we, we try and have a condition that anchors or addresses the occupancy and the notification standards that seem to differ between the two versions of the ordinance. And so I'm imagining that we could, um, we could anchor those around, uh, with a condition that says they got to comply with the most recent city code in effect. If that, if that would help us get there to that. Um, and then the issue of the lapsing, um, a direct reading, if we can be clear, um, for staff and for the permit holder, that if the rental license lapses, there's some period of time that this is, doesn't automatically kill the interim use permit, but there's some accountability. You got to get down to the city hall and, and, and secure your, your, your rental license. Or at some point, then, you know, your, your inaction is a statement that you're abandoning the interim use permits. I, I think two conditions that might maybe address those, those issues would be appropriate. So with that, I'd be looking for, um, a motion.
I'll give it a try. I'll give it a try. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve this I U P, uh, upon the reinspection of the, uh, the building inspection and the fire marshal with the following condition attached. And that would be that the terms of operation must comply with whatever the current city ordinance is, uh, today and moving forward. And in the event of a, uh, a lapse of licensure, that the city would implement the appropriate, uh, process of notification, uh, to, uh, the applicant, and that, uh, the applicant would have the ability to, uh, to address, uh, any concerns the city has with the lapse of, of licensure.
Got that motion, David, you get that? Thumbs up from David. And I have a sec, second from Erickson. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just to be difficult, just to be difficult.
Please be difficult.
Why, I don't understand why we have to say they comply with the most recent, because that's the way the rules are. I, I can't say that I was arrested for something, and I say, well, that's not the most recent law. You know, or, or, you know, or whatever, it's, that's just kind of logical. But if you want to include it, that's fine. I can't, I don't, I, 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 what other, uh, what other ordinance, ordinance is there to comply with? You can't legally comply with anything else, because it's not legal.
The, the, the interim use permit is going to be established based on the ordinance it's approved under.
Sure.
So changes to that later on, what we're trying to do is couch ourselves to say that, you know, this will go to city council for approval at the same meeting that they're going to take some action on the, the ordinance, and there's differences between these. And, and if we, if we do this based on the proposed revised ordinance, and that fails, then the applicant has to come back here and effectively have these, these, we have to do this action again. It's inconvenient, and that's the, that's the real, it's just, let's, let's not keep the, the applicant from coming here more times than they need to.
I don't see failure as an option with their, with their, with their, with being said, I withdraw my objections.
Thank you. So, um, other comments or discussion on the motion on the table? If not, uh, let's go to voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by playing, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, saying, all opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Uh, Mr. Chansky, please, where did we go from here?
Yes, Mr. Chair, like the previous two items, this will go before the city council for their final decision on this interim use permit on Monday, March twenty-first at seven thirty P M.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, at, uh, at this time, that concludes that item. Move to item number eight on the agenda. This is a public forum time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of planning commission members, there are time limits may be imposed. So at this moment in time, seven fifty-eight, we open the public comment forum. Um, anyone in the audience care to address, uh, the planning commission? Is there anyone that would care to address the planning commission? James, anyone online? Thank you. And last call, anyone care to address the planning commission? All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing at seven fifty-nine, and move on to item number nine, uh, David, Community Development Director's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few things, just actually all regarding the March twenty-first council meeting. Uh, it's going, it is kind of, if you look at the agenda that was published this afternoon, it's a little bit of the meeting of the ordinance. Um, I actually have four separate, um, ordinance amendments that might be, that'll be going before the commission, I mean, the council for their first reading, which might intrigue you. One obviously is proposed, what will be proposed ordinance number fifteen twenty-seven, which is the zoning code. Um, also, proposed ordinance fifteen twenty-four, because I'm going to rattle off the numbers, because it's fun, um, is an amendment to section three twenty of the city code, section three twenty is regarding, uh, um, administrative citations. This is where we govern our, our code enforcement. Um, over the last three years that I've been with the city, um, there's always, there's kind of been a, an ongoing dialogue, especially with the city council regarding code enforcement. So we held a workshop with the council back in January, and people were saying, well, how do you want, how do you want code enforcement being done in the, like, on a day-to-day basis? How do you want the process to be? The code currently says that we can do code enforcement. It says if you're going to issue a citation, this is the process by which you issue a citation, but it doesn't say anything about how we actually do code enforcement, whether it's complaint-driven, proactive, things like that. So we heard from the council at that, uh, at that workshop is that they want it to be a complaint-driven process, um, with the caveat that if there are major issues, they can be brought before the, the council for consideration of whether or not they should be enforced, uh, and how to enforce it. Um, so from there, we, I drafted some language, uh, that matched that, I believe, that intent um, to amend section three twenty to say that. Um, we went through twice through the council, just to, to go over that language, there's amendments, make sure they're happy with it. Um, so the new proposed language will be going before the council on the twenty-first for their first reading. And then again, it'll go to the, um, to the council for its second reading on April fourth. Um, because it is a, it is a, a non-zoning code amendment, uh, the council will hold a public hearing on that ordinance during their second reading on April fourth. Uh, the other, the third, uh, ordinance that will be going forward with council is ordinance number fifteen twenty-five, uh, which is an amendment, actually, it's a complete repeal and replace of section four twenty-five, which is our rental housing maintenance code. There's been, it was a rental housing committee that was formed back in two thousand eight to look at the rental code, um, specifically at the conduct and premise section. Um, however, as that committee was look, working on that, they just, they realized that really the whole kind of rental code needed to be looked at. Um, some proposed language was, some, well, final language was submitted about the end of, the end of two thousand twenty-one. That language went under consideration, um, for the council back in January, and now will be going before the council for formal adoption. Again, their first reading on March twenty-first, and then the public hearing on April fourth and second reading. And then the final is actually is fifteen twenty-six, which is our property maintenance code. Um, it's another actually amendment that came out, um, from the rental housing committee. This is also another complete repeal and replace. Um, currently, the city code has its own property maintenance code. Um, and with this recommended change, it is recommended to adopt what we call, is called the International Property Maintenance Code, or IPMC. And part of the way that this is being adopted is similar to how we re-adopted the building code back in twenty nineteen, when the state adopted a new building code, where the ordinance just states that the city follows the current version of the IPMC. Um, that's what we do with the building code. Previously, the building code was in our code, and the problem with that was anytime the state changes the building code, we're obligated to follow the state, our code became invalid. So in this way, it's anytime the IPMC changes, our code automatically changes. There are some subdivisions in that code, um, that address some Brainerd-specific things. Um, you know, the way we operate changes a little bit from the, what the IPMC operates, and there's some areas in the IPMC where it says insert, so the new code inserts what needs to be inserted. So, uh, on March twenty-first, we have the council completely repealing and replacing probably three of our biggest sections of our city code, being the building, the property maintenance code, the rental housing code, and the zoning code. All things that I think honestly, uh, we actually orchestrated it to work this way, believe it or not, um, being that these three items do kind of all go hand in hand. So we felt that it was a good idea to have them all being reviewed and considered simultaneously, and then going to effect simultaneously, not one going into effect one week, another one later, and another one later. Let's just do it all at once. Um, so with that, Mr. Chair, that's actually all I have for tonight. All I have for tonight.
Thank you, David. And, and the council president, I think, had some, some concerns about the length of the time it took for the rental code, but I, I think it was twenty eighteen and not two thousand and eight, so it was a, it was a lengthy process.
Did I say two thousand and eight? I apologize. I meant twenty eighteen. I meant twenty eighteen.
At, at times, it did feel like it was, but. So thank you, David. Any questions to staff? Hearing none. We're at commissioner questions and comments. Open this up, none? With that, then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Gorman. Gorman sneaks one in fast that time.
Second.
Is there a second, please?
Yes.
Oh, Erickson, thank you. And, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, we're done. Thank you, everybody.